I'd like to welcome everybody. This is the regular meeting of the village council for the village of Leonard. Today is December 11th, 2023. I want to wish everybody on behalf of the village and ourselves Merry Christmas and a happy and safe New Year, Happy Hanukkah, all of those holidays that occur around this time of year. I would like to ask, I don't usually do this, but we had a couple things. It's not an official announcement, but my understanding is that the Methodist Church closed on November 30th. So there's, we don't know what's going to happen, but I believe they officially notified the Methodists that they didn't have the money or the membership to. And then, I'm not going to name names, but I'd like everybody to keep in their hearts, we have a couple residents that are going through a tough time medically here in the village, and at this time of year, you know, we should have them in our thoughts and prayers. And I want to congratulate the decorating committee. What a fantastic event we had yesterday with the Christmas tree lighting, and Santa was here, of course, and it was very, people were really happy, and it was very well attended and well done, so kudos to that. So with that, I will ask everyone to rise for the pledge of allegiance, and then John, will you give a brief invocation?
My pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, thank you that we can all gather together for the grand wisdom as we go through today's meeting, and just for everybody with health concerns going on, that you would be with them and their family, and for also like coming on holiday, that everybody would have a good holiday as well, your name and that.
Thank you. Okay, for our first item of the agenda, can we have a roll call for attendance of the council, please?
President McDonald.
Here.
Alex Kennedy.
Here.
Ivan Pellicheck.
Here.
Jennifer Swack.
Here.
John Hawkins.
Here.
Okay, and we'll note for the record that Clerk Lori Zelenok is present and Treasurer Judy Verse has been excused. Okay, council has received the minutes of the November 13th regular meeting, our regular meeting. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections? If none, a motion to approve would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting of the Leonard County Council on November 13th, 2023.
I will second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of November 13th, 2023. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, minutes are approved. Council received an agenda this evening. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections? I would like to point out, before we get into the treasurer's report and the accounts payable, that Judy had sent out the wrong information, but the information you had before you has been corrected and verified. So if you looked at the electronic version and it doesn't match what you're looking at, what you're looking at is the correct information, right? So are there any additions or changes to the agenda? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as provided.
Hold on a second.
Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, a motion carries. The council has before it the treasurer's report for through November of 2023. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections on that? If not, a motion to receive and file an approved report would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file treasurer's report as presented.
Hold on a second.
Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, please, Lori?
Pellicheck.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Hawkins.
Yes.
Swack.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Council has also received the accounts payable for November of 2023, and the amounts, they're written into the agenda, but they are on the report as well, so, are the accounts payable, so.
I'd like to make a motion to pay bills from $1,484 for a service center general, $2,068.76 for major, $1,439.51 for local, $26,980 for Neil Park Recreation.
I will second that.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the motion or the items? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call, please, for that.
McDonald.
Yes.
Swack.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Pellicheck.
Yes.
Hawkins.
Motion carries. Very good. We have an opportunity now for public comment. Does the public have any comment?
No, I do not.
Okay, all right.
Can I add one to your original, or to your opening, was the village lost Wayne Yax?
Oh, yeah, that was.
Indulgence to the Yax family.
I just found out today, so, yeah, that's.
Yeah, it was not that long ago.
No, that's, it is notable. I had the other things on my mind, but Wayne lived right next door to the church.
The church.
Yeah, and I believe his daughters.
They were, one was staying there to be with him, but not necessarily staying.
Okay, yeah, because I know Phil, his son, was visiting him.
Yeah, yeah, Phil was constantly here, so.
Okay, thank you for that. It's a good, that was a good comment. Okay, we'll move on to new business, then. First item under new business is the nature park design plan conclusion. Today, I did receive the final documentation for the park plan. The next step is, basically, I have already filed for the grant funds that were approved for that, so we should be getting $22,800 of that amount, which is about half of what we've spent back for that, for the park plan. And I will send it to the council. It just seemed like too much today to dump in everybody's lap, but of course, we can take a look at it, any changes, questions, or corrections, let me know. The next step for us would be, I would recommend that as soon as the 2024 Oakland County Park and Recreation Grant application period opens, that we apply for a grant for the actual construction of the park. They do, they anticipate having a grant program in 2024. They only started it like three years ago, so every year, it's been a, it's up to the park commissioners to decide, and this year, the maximum request for a grant was $100,000. So that would be terrific for us if we could qualify for that amount. But meanwhile, you have an opportunity to review it, and we'll have it available for the public as well, and we can move on, iron out any, if there are any questions or concerns, we can take a look at them. So, moving on, I'm here to beg the council's indulgence. You allocated $1,500 in order to fix the DPW truck, the dump truck. The mechanic, when he got under it, he found several, one major and several smaller problems, but the major problem was an expensive one. The oil pan had rusted to the point where it was, it had been, we'd had a few oil drops, but it was, it was very bad, so we ended up spending, and on my authority, I authorized the parts and the labor, but we spent, in labor, $1,665, which is slightly over what you approved, and on parts, it was well over $2,000. It was like $2,200. The oil pan alone was $884 for that, and I have to take some responsibility. In my mind, I was thinking of a car that uses six quarts of oil, and the truck uses six, it had eight gallons of oil in it, the transmission was, the filters alone were a couple hundred dollars. It was an education for me, and I went and got all the parts that I could, you know, I went to Flint, went, and the mechanic ended up supplying, we couldn't get them from the normal sources, and he had to order them from wherever he gets his parts from, so, but he did not charge us extra for the parts, that he, we just have to reimburse him for that cost, which was about $300, a little over 300. So anyway, it added up to be a considerable amount of money, and so I am informing you now, and probably, it would be closer to the $4,000 total for the, for all of the work. So Judy and I have not had a chance to sit down and tally everything up. We paid, initially, we paid $1,700 for parts, including the oil pan, so that we could get that fixed right away, just, it was just before they were talking about some snow and storms, it'd be end of November, and we got that so that if we needed the truck, in fact, Don did go out and saw it a couple times, and then he came back and we finished everything. We got everything done except the rear brakes, which we have all the parts for, but with the weather like it's been, we were just hesitant to get it torn down. So I don't have a full total, but it's going to be in the vicinity of $4,000, and.
Is that in excess of what we've already allocated, or does that include the?
That includes the 1,500, so.
So what do you want to authorize?
Three, 25, yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking at least 3,000, because a couple of the parts, when I went to, I had to make a second run to the part place in Flint, and they, I had to buy a special transmission fluid that was $48 a gallon for the Allison truck transmission, so, so there's probably, I don't want to have to come back and tell you that it's going to be significantly, but I'm thinking 4,000. It's going to be, might be even north of that a little bit, but it had to be done. I mean, the truck, we really haven't spent any money on that truck since we bought it. We did pay it off this year, so it seemed like a good time to get everything on it, checked over and fixed, and the guy did a great job. It was about two and a half days, but he put the, you know, got the oil pan, and it was, it was a considerable job. I was there for some of it, but.
Does money have to be switched around to make the full payment on that?
No, no, we have, I believe, 6,000 in repairs for, for the equipment, and that's not new equipment, that's just repairs, so I'm not afraid of going over budget in that, on that, but it's going to chew up a significant amount of that budget.
Well, they said it needed it.
Right. So if the council would consider authorizing an additional $3,000, that will give me some cushion. I don't think it'll be $4,500, but I think it'll be north of 4,000 by the time all is said and done. That would, that would be appreciated. That way Judy will have everything accounted for, and I won't, I won't be hanging out there in the wind.
So do they have to be approved?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve another $3,000 for the DPW truck repairs.
Hold on a second.
Hold on a second.
Okay, John? Okay. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mm-hmm. So that was Kennedy for the first and Hawkins for the second?
Correct.
Okay. McDonald.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Pellicheck.
Yes.
Hawkins.
Yes.
Swack.
Yes.
Just in closing on that matter, Judy and I talked about whether maybe it would be appropriate to have a higher, like that I could authorize more up to a certain amount of money, but I don't anticipate that need. I, it was, I underestimated this project. I did not anticipate.
Did he indicate any interval, service interval for service that he did? Are we looking at these expenses next year, two years?
No, I think once a year, if he comes and does, he did find a couple problems on the greater turntable underneath that we're going to have to address, but Don and I, and he, he said, you know, he was uncomfortable saying, well, you can run it the way it is because there are numerous bolts. There's, there's a bunch of bolts on this assembly, but he said two of them are gone, and he said, who knows what the status is on the rest of them, you know, so the bottom line is, is Don and I are thinking in, maybe in the spring, when we get our new budget, we can.
And there are bolts that you can swap out now, or?
No, they'll probably have to go back to Monroe, the aftermarket equipment dealer, because they're on their piece of equipment, they've got, it's on the rotary table, and while, while they're doing that, we can have them, there is a small hydraulic fluid leak on the valve body for the truck, for the accessories, so it's not great news, but it's not so bad that we have to do anything about it right now, so, especially with the truck.
And the oil pan is not something that, I mean, that's probably a 10 to 15-year thing, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, this, well, the truck's 11 years old, but it had 170,000 miles on it when we bought it, so, yeah.
Where it sits in the weeds.
Right.
So.
So anyway, but I'm not going to ask for that kind of authorization at this point. I think it's lesson learned, I need to.
My question is more also for moving forward, we also need to hyrate this budget because of the additional requirements on that truck.
Yeah, if, yeah, changing the oil, I think the oil was.
Yes, I'm sure.
Yeah, and when you go, when you have eight gallons, it's a lot of oil. So, yeah, I think I'll take a look at the equipment budget, we all will, when we go through our budget cycle, which I think I'm going to touch on when I make my report, so.
So you are going to get the roads blocked this winter?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
Yes, yes, we are.
It was kind of hit me this last year, that's why I'm asking.
Well, I'm sure somebody will remind me if there's something needs to be done.
You know it.
Okay, okay, moving on, then, the next item is the appointment of a hearing officer for 4285 forest hazardous building action. As the council is aware, last, early part of, the second week of November, our three inspectors, our building official, the mechanical and plumbing inspector, and the electrical inspector, all, we received authorization from the court to go through that premises and inspect them, and the findings that they had were that this qualifies as a hazardous building. So the next step in the process, according to our ordinance, which is section, section 12 of this, which covers the building code, is if we're going to declare it a hazardous structure, we will have to appoint a hearing officer who is appointed by the village president to serve at his or her pleasure, and that person shall be a person who has experience in housing matters, including but not limited to an engineer, architect, building contractor, building inspector, or member of a community housing organization. An employee of the enforcing agency, that would be the village, shall not be appointed as hearing officer. So we will have to notify the property owners that we are going to declare, that we intend to declare the building hazardous. They then have 30 days to respond, at which time the clock starts ticking, as I understand it, and we set a date for the, for the public hearing. Now, the hearing officer will receive the reports from the, from the inspectors and the building official that have already looked at it, and he will, he's an objective, impartial person, and he'll make a determination based on that to present to us, at which time we can then go to court and ask the court to intervene and perform, most likely will ask for demolition, based on what I saw anyways. So I'm here tonight to ask the council's approval of my recommendation to appoint Mr. Cosmo Lombardo to, as our village of Leonard hearing officer. Mr. Lombardo lives in Addison Township. His family is quite well-known for Lombardo Building.
Lombardo Homes.
Yeah, this is the son of the founder of Lombardo Homes. He also oversaw the action for the dangerous building in Lakeville on Rochester Road, and the township supervisor, Bruce Pearson, recommended him highly, and he very graciously agreed to do it for the village. The caveat there is, of course, he wants to meet with me, we only spoke over the phone, he was a busy man, and he said he, we would, we would meet, he would like to see the reports that we've received from our inspectors, he will take a look at the premises and make a determination for us. So I would recommend him to serve as the village's hearing officer at this time. Are there any questions before we, okay. I think we're fortunate to get a man with his qualifications, willing to do this, so. I would appreciate a motion and a second to make that appointment.
I will make a motion to allow the president to appoint.
Cosmo Lombardo.
As our hearing officer for 4285 hazardous building actions.
Hold on a second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to appoint Cosmo Lombardo as the village of Leonard hearing officer for purposes of the 4285 forest hazardous building action. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. And I should add that there is no remuneration. He does not get paid by us, he doesn't, you know, he works completely independently of any.
Yeah, he's a gentleman, he's not a party.
Right, right. Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate your support. Next item is the village community development block grant account, actions due to county policy changes. Basically, Lori was notified about some matters that had to do with our reallocation, the year, the year, changing the year that the fund could be used for, remember, we left that kind of open-ended. They don't allow that anymore. They don't, you have to keep it at the same year, and so Lori, do you want to finish?
Sure, we can kind of do it together.
Okay.
So Mike Puker, who is the gentleman who kind of oversees that, we stay in compliance, there's like a little magical number that they want, which is, they want us to not have old money hanging around, and so that's been kind of a bother. So he found out about a resident that we have locally here that has a lien on their home that was in need of some funds to help offset that lien, and we were basically able to make a direct debit from the account of those 2019 funds that were going to expire. Basically, the money that we had talked about reprogramming to use for the sidewalks, that I had gotten that six-month extension on, I was at the end of my extension, there are no more extensions after that, and then unfortunately, they changed the policies, they changed a couple policies with block grant, just because there were communities who were hoarding up the money, and then what they were doing was trying to use it on one big project. You just can't do that, because the, you know, the government doesn't, no, they don't, they wanted released and used, and that's how it has to go. So anyway.
But it counted to cover somebody's.
So we were able to use that immediately because what we did is we just didn't officially reprogram it because we couldn't, so it was great that those motions were broken out into separate motions. That way, it didn't affect it, we just didn't ratify it, and the money basically was able to go, would you say that's about an accurate accounting of how that went down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we couldn't, we basically couldn't keep it.
Couldn't keep it.
The money was going to go, and so they were open, and they brought it forward to Lori, that we have a resident here in the village that had applied for the county's home improvement program, which is a reverse, reverse lien on the home. If they don't make payments when the house is sold, and it's surprising, now, maybe it's not surprising, but it's, it is a pretty good option, a lot of people, not just in Leonard, I don't know of any in Leonard, but outside of Leonard, in Addison, there've been several people that have done that. So what happened was, we took the minor home repair funds in the 2019 program year, which we were going to lose, and we took some from the 2022 money, making a total of $6,889.19, and that was used to relieve some of that lien that was going to be placed on the house for that resident. So Lori and I talked about it, I told, I told her, I think, better use it than lose it. Mike Puker is the contract compliance officer, and he's who we dealt with on this instance, and he was pretty adamant about the 2022 money also, it was in.
There was a remainder, what it was, we had used some for a furnace, for an emergency repair for a resident, we had pulled 2022 money because we had allocated that other money prior to, so that was that remaining amount that was in there, so we were able to use what was left in a minor home repair account from 2022, what was left in minor home repair from 2019. We have nothing in 2021, so actually, this, we're one of the few townships or villages that's actually in compliance right now. I just got an email, which is the first time in like, since I've been doing this, that I got one that said, you know, here, they put the ugly list out, and we weren't on it. So we're back where we need to be, you know, which is nice, because now we don't have that hanging over our head, where I feel like we're kind of chasing that money, trying to, you know, to square it away and find a little thing for it, so that's behind us. We're still moving forward with the reprogramming of the 2021 money, which is already, you guys already decided how that's going to go for the sidewalks, and that's in the works. But just happy we were able to.
So the only thing left was 2022?
2023 is what we've got, we've got, and 2020, we have 7,000 in 2021, we have 7,000 in 2023, and I have currently. And I have currently just applied for twenty twenty-four funds, which I won't see till the middle of next year.
Yeah.
So there's another seven thousand.
They, yeah, they just released the funds in December, didn't they? Or was it late November?
You know what? Because we weren't getting reports from them for a while. I can't say exactly when it was, but, right. So that was just released, so.
The twenty, the twenty-three funds, we're just, here we are at the end of twenty-three. And they're just now releasing those funds. That's as, I think that's as late as I can ever remember them before they, you know, release them. It really doesn't do any good in, in the program year. You lose a program year by the time they get it approved.
True, true. And I know that they were having, you know, they updated a computer system, which seemed to never end, so.
So ultimately, it, I, by my calculations, I think we're sitting on fourteen thousand.
That's right.
For the removed architectural barriers, which will be for the sidewalks.
We're going to.
It's less, it's less than we originally planned on, but it's, it's worth it just to be in compliance and not have to pray somebody has trouble and needs money. I mean, that's almost what it boils down to.
It kind of is, but can you pay DTE bills? Can you pay consumer's bills?
Not that I'm aware of.
There's so many things you just can't do.
Because that's usually people.
I've, well, our fire department has been a huge help when it, when it comes to residents that have, you know, financial woes, especially for heating and cooling and, or not cooling, but heating and wells and things like that. They've always stepped up and if not covered all of it, they've covered part of it, so. Some headed your way.
I know, I've been watching.
Okay.
So anything that comes up will be twenty twenty-four monies now.
Yeah, I imagine we'll, we'll get a notification in June or July that how much we're going to get.
Is this money that we pay out and then get reimbursed for?
Yes, that's the way.
Oh, oh, like that way, yes, I'm sorry, yes. That's right.
It's a reimbursement, yeah, they don't.
Wait till the middle of the year and get reimbursed for it.
Yep, okay, so I just, I don't think there's any action necessary. It's, it is what it is. So we'll move on then to, what was I going to do? Okay, the sewer district, public notice and special assessment, okay. Council directed me last month to draft a public notice. This would be, and I can, you know, this is just for conversation at this point. This would go to each of the residents. It wouldn't, it's not what would be published as a, as the public requirement for the hearing. We received that last month along with the, when the, the particip, the properties that would be participating, of which there are approximately thirty-one. And I was going to provide you with a spreadsheet for that. But I have asked Paul Omira for a couple of clarifications on why some homes, like over on West Street, the property's under one ownership and they front on Elmwood. So how do, you know, how does that work? And if the property is, is currently contiguous, but they're paying for both, would they be eligible? I mean, would the, so we, those are the kinds of questions we need to, we need to answer. But we decided last month that we weren't going to set a public hearing until we were ready for it. I can't say we're ready for it, but I was maybe thinking that maybe our January meeting, we could talk about actually setting the date. And by then, I'll have gotten, I'll be able to provide you with the list of the properties that we're going to be talking to. He did, another instance where I raised the question was there, there is a property on East Elmwood, this side of the trail, that wasn't included. And it's a, it's got a large outlying property as well. And Paul's explanation verbally was that, that it was big enough property where if we didn't include it, it would shrink, it would shrink the district and make it available for like, for either a vacant, current vacant property. It would just add to the surplus capacity that we would have. Whether that's fair or not, that, that's why when we get the complete list, you'll all have to look at it. And we'll, we set a hearing date and we'll hear from those people. We'll send, we'll direct mail them each one that there's going to be a public hearing.
Because I guess you kind of have to plan for the double lots being split and built on.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Careful not to go, stretch too far. And then there will supply new builds that pop up. I assume this is not a one and done, two, one meeting? And there's probably a follow-up to that.
Well, I guess it depends on the results. If, if the ones, and the residents will, will get some understanding of the costs involved. And the people that would benefit the most would be the people that are having problems currently or are worried about having problems. And I don't know. I, I think we would have to ask, ask, if we get a representative, if the people show up and we can get a representative feedback from them, whether we should go ahead or not. The next question would be, there is, there is a ballot next year. I mean, we could put it on the ballot for, for those residents. But that's, that's a difficult thing in a presidential election to, you know.
It'll be overlooked.
Yeah, yeah, I'd rather see us.
Do this personally.
Get the feedback directly and see how, how well people take to it. So, but that's up to the council. If you want to set a date now, that's fine. But honestly, I'm not ready to get, have something ready that can be done in January at this point.
I'd like to make a motion to table to leave the list of properties to send out to the homeowners. I'm not going to expect one of them to, will you guys a little bit? So that way Paul doesn't get the list by the January meeting.
Well, he, he'll, he, he's given us a list. There's basically thirty-one, thirty, well, he's highlighted the homes in the list that would be in the district, but he didn't highlight, that's why I questioned him. Why isn't this one highlighted? Why, you know, why, where are we capacity-wise, et cetera? So we'll even that out. And honestly, I want to have a good grasp of it. And I'm, still don't have a great grasp of, we, I have a great grasp of the district and what we hope to accomplish. But the money is where I'm still.
And that's the only thing that's going to matter.
And that really is. I mean, it, we can't ask our residents to sign a blank check for something like this. So it would have to be pretty specific.
There will likely be more questions like the ones that you have come from residents. Why are they included? Why aren't they, or vice versa, so.
The, the scary, the, the, the bulk of the cost is for the loan, you know, the construction and development for the project. And the actual rates, I mean, the way Paul explained it, I mean, it might be like twenty-five dollars for each REU, you know, which is like basically each residential unit would be twenty-five bucks. But then you have to pay the overhead and the loan. You know, what, what does it cost? He, he, he seems to feel that the, 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 the cost of the system, of the, the cost to the consumer using the system will be low. But it doesn't account for what it's going to take here at the village to set up an office, do the billing, do the mailing, have, have the personnel, you know, doing maintenance, et cetera. So I, I want to understand that better. You know, I just don't think it's represented well in the, I mean, we're looking at two hundred and fifty dollars for a loan for a month just for building it for this limited number of residents. And we're talking about three, over three million dollars borrowing, so. But I'll, I'll abide by what the council directs me to do, so.
Maybe they're going to break it for a lot of people.
I think it will. I think, I, I'm in the district. I mean, I'm, my house is one of them. I, but I have a couple acres of land, whereas most residents don't.
But you could probably split, well, you're.
No, I couldn't, it's, well. No, my septic is already back in the other lot. Of course, if I had sewer, then I'd, you know, no. I have basically a landlocked parcel in that, yeah, so.
Doesn't account, but still.
But, but I, you know, I'm retired and I've got a fixed income. Two hundred and fifty dollars a month or closer to, my thinking is closer to three hundred dollars a month. Thirty-six hundred dollars a year is a lot of money. You know what I mean? It's, I don't, I don't know how many people here. The, the people that have to buy, that need a septic or, or whatever, they'd probably rather put it into that than put it into the sewer than they would putting in a twenty thousand dollar septic system or more if they have to put in a package treatment system. So for them, it would make economic sense, but not for most other people. I just don't, don't think it will. And again, a lot of people think, oh, if we get sewers, we'll have more development and everything. But our, the system we're talking about isn't for the entire village. There, all of that vacant land, so to speak, is not going to be able to have access to it because we're building it to the right size right now for what we have, just because it is so expensive.
Well, it is only a downtown thing. It's not.
Yeah, no, no.
Specifically this Elmwood and Forest spot, so. Is it worth having a meeting with that information to see how much effort you need to put in?
Well, yeah, and I think that's why the dollars have to be right. I mean, we have to be, yeah.
So financially, it's only those people that it affects that are going to be paying for it?
Yeah, basically, we create a special assessment district for sewerage. And then only the properties that benefit from it would be paying for it, not the whole village, so. Frankly, we probably, even if we levied all the millage available to us as a village, we're, we have a twelve and a half cap. We're at seven. And I don't, one mill generates probably thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand dollars a year. So that's not going to pay.
And that's all generated?
Yeah, yeah. We, that's one of, most people that have, don't have, aren't familiar with how villages and that operate. We, we get funding, you know, we get the gas tax money, which we basically have to put back into the roads and everything. And then we get revenue sharing from the state, you know, for sales tax and things like that, so.
But the bulk of our taxes goes up to Addison, it doesn't come to Leonard?
Schools get most of the taxes. Yeah, Addison Township doesn't get as much as, Addison gets one and three-quarter mill, which has been reduced by Headley down, I think it's less than a mill. But they have huge properties and huge area, you know, so they, they're not hurting for money for their operations either, so. We just have kind of the opposite situation.
Can I give you the drain money then? My brother went to the village and drained.
Which drain? Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we just table it till then?
Yeah, so there's motion to table until we have the financial and the list of affected properties. Okay. There any questions on the motion? That was, Alex made the motion and John second. If there are no questions, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. And I will update you at, at our January meeting. Okay, old business, DPW winter preparedness. You kind of already have the picture. Don went today and we, he had a conversation with the manager from the county. And we, Judy and I have already taken care of, we've made arrangements for salt, for cold patch, and for chloridated sand for the local roads. So things, things are right where they should be. We do have, we probably have about six yards of salt in the salt barn, but we'll, we'll definitely be getting more. We would have got salt today, but we went and got cold patch instead and kind of took care of that mess up on East Street.
Before we get more salt, is there any other areas that need cold patch?
Yeah, we don't have it, we used four tons today. And that, we got all they had. We wanted more. We didn't, we filled that big hole and part of the, most of the little holes that were right there in front of the school. But we need more and they don't have it. But they are ordering it, so yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll be on that too.
Were those the holes in the curb up to the school?
No, they were right.
Yeah, the last president on East Street, closest to the school.
Gotcha.
They had a pop hole, so.
So who would take care of the school driveway now? Literally the curb between Elmwood and Fair Approach.
They, they have, they have their driveway. We have the right-of-way.
This is, this is like literally a big curb.
The curb's broken?
It's, it has a couple holes. Like it's, it's, it could be a problem for tires. But I don't know if it's them or if it's.
Oh, it would be, wow, is it in the radius or is it?
Or itself, so.
It's not in.
I don't remember it.
It's, it's actually, it's like I said, from the road as you literally touch their property, the curb onto it, onto their approach.
You mean the cement joint, that flat cement joint right there?
It's, it's curved, but it's not the flat part, not the actual approach end. It's like I said, between their approach and our road.
It's on the parking lot side.
It sounds like the parking lot side, yeah.
To me, I think that's probably them.
Yeah.
Because there are things like that, let that work be done, so.
Right.
They need to, I think they probably need to get back to their contractor and say.
Because there's several holes across, so it might be a contractor issue there.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it, but, yeah. Okay, so DPW, you know what's going on. The president's report, we did not have any FOIA requests. You did, you see in your packet that there was, there is a, today we received a block grant report, but it doesn't really reflect what transpired a week ago. That was about a week ago, wasn't it? Was it longer?
Let's see here, it was before December first. Or, no, I take that back, it was after December first. Because I had already finished the grant. Yeah, you're right, it was a week ago.
Yeah, so regardless, what we just discussed, I think is pretty accurate. Ordinance enforcement, of course, forty-two eighty-five Forest, we're going through that process. Nature Park, as I said earlier, we got the, finally got the design plan. I have to forward it to the county. They, they automatically reimburse us eighty percent. But they have to have the final plan, which we just got today. So once we get that, we'll get the additional twenty back. And then, as was brought up earlier, Judy and I and Lori have already started talking about what we need to do with our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Our budget year runs from, basically from March first all the way back around through February twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, depending on leap year. And the, some of the priorities, I think, for twenty twenty-four are going to be sidewalk construction on Forest Street. And then we'll be applying for the parks grant for the nature park. And then equipment repairs is probably going to chew up a portion of that early on once winter season's done, barring any breakdowns. But that would force us to do something. That's where we are. But I am wide open for priorities of the council members. I mean, where, where do you see the need for us to do more or do anything? We can think about it and. We can think about it and in January, I will have a presentation of what, if you'll let me know. And Alex, you're always really good at, uh, at, uh, those ideas, so. Whatever, whatever you think, it won't be a lot different. I don't anticipate it being a lot different than our current budget, you know, as far as totals or whatever. But, uh, I, we are looking at what we're going to have in reserves because that's where we would pay for any excess that we don't generate, so.
Mike?
Yes.
Where's the construction of the sidewalk going to take place?
Um, we're hoping to get the parks, the, uh, the park sidewalk in and then all the way down to Bezos Street.
Well, those are the connections, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Connections, you got it.
Yeah, we call them connectors, actually now, because of, the county is going to allow us to put in connectors, um, with the block grant money, with the funds.
ADA pathways.
Yeah.
Which create connectivity into the village and that's how they're letting us do it.
Right. It's typical kind of bure-, bureaucraties. But I'll take it, you know, if you give us an opportunity to spend that money that way, then let's do it, so.
So did the resident salon get to know this?
Well, a couple, uh, one does, I know, but I don't know. There's really not much to be said. I, I'm hoping that the one, the resident that has that big tree that got hit by lightning, I'm hoping he'll let us go around that on his side, but that's, that's up for negotiation. So we'll see. Okay, trustee and committee reports. Nothing for the summer festival committee, they're still looking for volunteers. Cable commission, John, anything?
Nothing major.
Okay.
Monday.
Okay, uh, as I've said previously, the decorating committee knocked it out of the park for the Christmas tree lighting and the decorations and, and everything around town. So Yvonne, I know you've been, you and Jennifer both have been really, both Jennifers, Jennifer and Dale too, has been really spearheading it and it really, look at, you look around Rowan Hall, it looks great, you know, it really is nice. North Oakland Transportation, they did finish the parking lot construction. So, um, now we're into the budget negotiations with Oakland County again because there, they would not, even though we have a three-year contract, NODA has a three-year contract to provide transportation services for Oakland County. Oakland County only gave them a budget for last year, from two thousand and twenty-three. Now we have to negotiate for a budget for two thousand and twenty-four. However, uh, the routes, the routes are doubling. We're going from twenty-two routes to nearly fo-, well, forty, forty routes. Uh, we're covering, uh, Independence Township, Springfield Township and, uh, Brandon Town-, well, Brandon Township with caveat that Brandon is going to continue to operate its own operation and we're welcome to come in and if people, Brandon doesn't leave their community and neither does Independence Township. So people that want to go from, uh, let's just say from Brandon Township down to Pontiac to, for a doctor or whatever, will, can call NODA and NODA will do that. Meanwhile, they're keeping their own little operation going.
Stay in Brandon?
Yeah, and Independence Township. And you know, I'm going to say it publicly in front of the camera, but, um, it makes no sense to me because all of their residents are paying this nine, point nine-five millage in their community and that money is not being, coming back to their community. It's their, the, because currently Oakland County says, no, we're not funding that type of, uh, transportation. This transportation is supposed to be a network, it's supposed to be a connector to make, make it possible for people to go in where they need to in Oakland County. So that's one of the things that has to be worked through and that's, that makes it unpredictable for us, which is why the, the budget, um, the budget process is intrinsic to what we'll be able to do or, and where we can serve in Oakland County, so. It's, it's a big deal for, for everybody. Okay, uh, let's see, the next, their notice next meeting is December twenty-first. And that day before that, December twentieth, is the Polyant Trail meeting, just in case anybody wonders. And then the planning commission, um.
We will meet in December.
Are you meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Boy, that's.
December twenty-first.
That's right, right before Christmas. Brave people. Generous to give up that kind of time.
We didn't circle enough of them from the things.
Okay.
Sure we've got it covered.
Okay. All right, so then, uh, meeting's December twentieth for the trail, Village Parks. I think we've talked about that enough tonight. And we, we did not get any, uh, applications for community development block grant. The one, the, the home improvement application is handled by the county. The monies that we contributed to that, uh, we don't, we, we're not part of that process. Once we turn it over to the county, then they apply it.
You wouldn't even have seen that happen, would you?
No, we weren't contacted.
You mean, that, that would be an option for you? Or for, for the village?
Yeah, yeah, it is an option. I mean, it's, people that have lived here a while know that we do this, but.
How would we have known that that was an option to, to cover an expense like this?
Well, we could only cover it because we were going to lose that money.
Oh, okay, so that's not a.
Yeah, yeah, that's, we couldn't, normally we wouldn't.
It was just.
Contribute, somebody couldn't say, come to us and make an application and say, I want five thousand dollars to use for my home improvement, uh, project through Oakland County. I think they're capped at twenty-five thousand. They take increment, or increments of twenty-five thousand for the home improvement program.
Oh, I see.
So they'll put a revert, they put a lien on the property when they, uh, pay for the, pay for the project.
So it's not, no reason to worry that this would come up again? It was really just, that's truly.
It was rare and I think that, I think part of it was that we had communicated with them that just, how it was just killing us to lose, to lose that money, that that was going to happen. And I think because the way Oakland County, they, they clumped all of their offices into one. It used to be the block grant people, they were in Pontiac in a separate building, they weren't connected with everybody else. Now they're all in the main building and so somehow Mr. Puker had made contact with somebody from that program and it was just an opportunity and it really a blessing, I think, just, you know, just the way it worked out. So I appreciate the fact that he was kind of shaking the trees and maybe looking for a way to help a citizen out and just not lose that money.
Yeah.
But it was, it was a rare, unusual thing. Normally it would never happen that way.
Right.
Good thing. Merry Christmas for them.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, I have nothing further, council? Is there a second? Is there a second for that?
Hawkins.
Okay. All in favor of the mo-
Seven fifty-nine?
Yeah. Next regular meeting is January eighth. Seven fifty-nine, all in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Well, Merry Christmas, everybody, and I'll, I'll be in touch.